Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the May 1st. We're May 8th, regular Commissioners' Court meeting. The judge is not in today, so I'll be presiding. And item number two, the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, free and just as for all.
Item number three, approval of minutes. I think Mr. Gonzalez brought the...
I approve the minutes in second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Aldis. Second by Commissioner Science. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number four, approval of claims. Do we list the claims or not?
But we don't have an auditor.
No, I understand. Do you know anything about the new auditor? I know they appointed an auditor, but what the status is? Have they sworn in?
Not here.
Is he bonded already or not?
Yes, sir.
But he hasn't been sworn in.
Not to my knowledge.
So he can act as the auditor.
Well, I guess that's why they needed to submit a case.
But why do we have so many? What, do we have to approve it or what?
You can table it.
But is there any action here? I mean, vendors, new vendors, but it doesn't matter about the auditor.
You're number four, right?
Approval of claims is presented by the auditor? Yes.
But there's no claims.
There's no claims.
No action.
No action, okay. Before we go into the reports, we have an item here, item number seven, that I'd like to take up first, so these people can go out there, back to work, and take care of those patients that are there.
Going back to the auditor, is the only way we're going to find out when he's going to be available?
He's usually available.
When is he going to be available?
I was hoping he would be here today to...
Bueno, pero quién es? ¿Quién es?
Boy Carter.
Es el hombre fantasma.
No, it's... Hold on, hold on.
No sé quién será.
Your Honor and Commissioners, the appointed auditor came by our office on Friday, and he said he'd be available today after... Becky, he said after lunch, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I was hoping he would be here today.
Who has to swear him in?
I imagine the district judges, because he was appointed by the district judges.
They were appointed.
But he's already bonded?
Yes, sir. The bond is in our office already, so he is bonded.
Okay, so all we need to do now is get him sworn in.
Yes.
And he can start his duties.
The problem is, we don't want to go two, three months without a claim. We're going to come and do.
Right, no, I'm pretty sure we won't. And I was hoping he'd be here, because I wanted to bring him in to executive session to go over the problems we had with the prior auditor. Hopefully, he can fix the problems that we've been having, you know, to avoid all that kind of problems that we have had, you know. But apparently, he's not here, you know, so...
He did go by our office on Friday, and he told us he'd be available after lunch today.
Yeah, but well, maybe we...
Si, pero el día es el día de la mañana, no after lunch?
That's what he said.
I don't know.
Maybe we'll have him back.
Well, anyway...
I don't know if that was him, and then get an update or something.
Sure. Do you want him to come by right now?
Please examine, maybe he's available.
Maybe we can put him in executive session, talk to him, okay?
Okay, let me call him.
Okay. Going back to item number seven, before we go into the report. Discuss, discuss and take action to approve proclamation to proclaim May 14 National Nursing Home Week in Starr County. Well, I have a motion.
I saw more to the proclamation.
Tell them what you hear.
It's been moved by Commissioner Science, second by Commissioner Aldis. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or opposed, same sign. Motion carried, okay?
Can we take the picture?
Yeah, I think, yeah, so they can...
Yeah.
No, we're not trying to get rid of you guys, but I know you got work to do and...
And can anyone say...
Si, si. Y cuando tenemos otro, yo no quiero que vengan aquí. Allá la bonita. Si, so, and we don't want you here, don't worry, we can... We'll be taking care of there.
No, we're prepared, we can have a party.
All right.
In a minute.
Bueno, vamos a estar, no es que las comodas, te voy a decir.
Only that she could have made a mistake.
Yo creo que sí, muy bien. Ya tiré la cua. Ay, Denny, es correr también.
¿Ay, viene?
Talín corre, Denny, ¿no?
Sí, también le toca.
Tiere contra, ¿no?
Yo ahí voy, ¿eh?
We're ready, guys. I'm going to take like three. One, two, three. Can I have a paper or something just for that?
Querido, vamos a ver qué nos da en ella.
¿Ponle su Facebook? ¿Cuándo va a estar aguantando la puñeta?
One, two, three. One, two, three. And then you're like, one, two, three.
Listo, montado y armado.
Si, este...
Hey, guys, here we are.
Si, lo vamos a poner contra este, y ya no buscando para que tocar a Luis García. Este no cae más. Digo, vamos poniendo para Luis García también.
Luis García.
Sí.
Que hay que pedo.
Sí, que sacarle un pedo.
All right.
Que hay que pedo, porque ya estamos.
Sí, porque...
Desde que me pollo.
Victor Canales.
No, Victor Canales, bravo, que corre con tres pies.
Está bravo.
Okay.
Nosotros a ver quién te lo agarran.
Is there anybody here in the audience that wants, that's out of town and prefer to be, to come first before we start the report?
Out of town, all right.
Or they're here, but they need to go back to work. Por esta, pero no, we're going to... Yeah, okay, we go back to reports. Letter A, Guest Department.
Your Honor, AMV, Transposition Guest Department, table for next Commissioners' Court meeting.
Okay. Sanu. C, Text Collector, Amayda, Ms. Salinas.
Si, me servíamos de reportes.
Good morning, Your Honor and Commissioners. In front of you, you have a copy of the report for the month of April.
Do we have one?
Yes, you should have one, and if you don't, I'll provide one for you.
Solo que quedan las llantas. Y uno por que no dan el reporte aparte, bien, pongan los que esto es de papel. Aquí está.
Okay.
Okay, for the total collections on April the 16th, 2016, it's 6,888,08189. For the April of 2017, it's 7,03,469 dollars and 89 cents, with a difference of $15,387. With the total wide collection, it's 446,027 and 88 cents. For April, it's 452,851 and 69, with a difference of $6,823 with 81 cents. The current collections, it's 3,879,062 dollars. With the month of, year of April 2017, it's 308,05718,047, and a difference of 79,252 with 15 cents. The total delinquents is 3,03101 with 27 cents. With April 17, it's 3,97,750 dollars with 42 cents, with a difference of $94,639 with 15 cents. The total collections for MNO for, as of April the 2017, it's 7,974,933 with 85 cents. The total collection for, as of April the 2017, it's 3,489,33222 cents. We have collected a 65 percent of our tax levy.
Okay, and those delinquent taxes, they're still including that part of Acom Blachapa, yes, or no?
Did they ever, did you ever, did they ever take that, taken off the...
The tax rule.
The delinquency, that Blachapa and all that stuff, that we talked to the delinquent tax attorney?
They are working on the accounts to remove them from the tax rule, and also on the return statements and so forth. The delinquent taxes...
Because, you know, we don't have an accurate delinquent rule, because it is not a true figure, because we got taxes, the Blachapa and Elias, we did away, we forgave those taxes, I don't know, maybe 15 years ago, if I can remember right.
I think...
And they took them off from the school, but then they take them off from the county.
Okay, I think that's up to the appraisal district to answer, if they take it off or not. My responsibility...
We're not blaming you.
No.
We're, the, that was the delinquent tax attorney's job to do.
Right.
They were supposed to have taken off that delinquent rule, because it's not a true figure, you know, and why they need, I have brought it up for the past two, three years, and still have not been taken care of. So I think we just need to bring these people back before the Commissioners' Court, and give a straight answer, why haven't they done it?
Okay.
Because, yes, 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 and all of a sudden, it goes away and nothing happens.
Any recommendations, sir?
Huh?
Any recommendations?
Well, no, we have to, we have to bring the delinquent tax attorneys to this Commissioners' Court to give us an answer. We brought the other day a lady, and that's why we're asking, have they done it? If not, I mean, I don't think so, but theirs, it's their job.
Right.
It's just those, like I told you, those return mails, you should give them to them.
Yes, I have.
And they say, because they're delinquent.
Right.
And their responsibility is to go after the people that owe taxes.
Right.
And to look for them. Am I right or wrong?
Yes.
Not the appraisal district, it's them. Here you go. These taxes haven't paid, you need to go and file a lawsuit against them. But first, they have to do, what they have to do, go find the property, if they're in existence or not.
Right. Well, we went to, my staff went through each and every one of the statements, and we revised it to see if there was any activity...
And who do you take them to?
It was turned over to the delinquent tax attorney, sir.
And what did they tell you?
They're going to work on it. It's a big stack.
I know, I know.
It's big.
And probably those stacks are a bunch of those that belong to Blachapa and Elias.
Oh, yes, there's a lot of accounts in there.
Look at the tree, yeah, no?
Yeah.
Until they clear those, the delinquent tax rule, you're going to continue having those...
Right. But it was, nothing was being done until now that I revised every account, and then I turn it over to the delinquent tax attorneys to have them removed, to have them, to put them in lawsuits, or whatever they need to do on those accounts.
Right, you know, they need to remove if they're not existing.
Right.
But if it's not a real statement, we need to go after the ones that owe those taxes.
Yes, definitely, I agree with you, and that's the reason my office has been working very closely with these accounts, and to have them removed or put them in lawsuits.
Let me tell you something, I don't know if these people realize, but the statute says, after 20 years, you don't have to pay those taxes. All they have to do is see how old are those taxes, and if they're over 20 years, I mean, just, I'm going to take them off, because they're not collectible.
Right. We need to see if these people exist, so we can bring them in first, and then we'll take care of the rest. But we need to bring them in somehow.
Yeah.
Okay? Any questions?
We need to work on it.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we've been, I've been working on that since I came in. It takes the delinquent tax attorneys to come in, and so we can tell them what they need to do.
Mm-hmm.
Just bring them in.
Okay.
And we'll tell them what they need to do.
Okay, would you suggest that I advise them to bring them into next Commissioners' Court?
Because every time we have that delinquent taxes on the roll...
Right.
It really tears us up, because, you know, everybody thinks that nobody's paying.
Right.
You know? And that's not definitely...
And I am trying my best to collect as much as I can.
Correcto.
Yeah, and you know why they took them off from the school? Because the school was having, they were losing money to collect from the state because of the delinquency, because for, every dollar they don't collect, they get penalized, and that's why they moved on it quickly to get it, take them off.
Well, we need to be out there to collect this, I mean, to bring these people in, to see if they exist.
Si, but that's their job, not yours, ma.
Oh, yeah.
Your job is for them to go in there, when they get there, you charge them.
Oh, yeah.
Their job is to bring them, make them, make them go to your office and pay the tax.
Yes, that's, that's...
You don't have to bring them in. It's not your job. Your job is to collect. They're responsible to bring them in to your office and make them pay.
Yes.
You can't do their job, you got plenty of...
Yes.
To do.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you, ma.
Okay.
Letter D, Rose, will you wait till the last, or you want, you have another presentation?
This one's going to be real quick, we should drag this forward a little bit.
Come on, okay.
Actually, today, what we wanted to do is, we normally visit Commissioners' Court and answer any questions or address any concerns there are, but we think that it's probably a good idea to give you a real brief overview of some of the things that we're doing, that we can share in open session, and so we wanted to do that with you today. One of the things that we did want to share with you is, I think there's been still some conversation and confusion about the unemployment rate and things that are going on with that, and so we did want to confirm with you that Texas Workforce Commission did change their formula, and so the entire state changed and increased in their unemployment rate, because they're now using a different calculation to calculate the total of people in the workforce. And so we wanted to make certain that you knew that there hasn't been an extensive amount of job losses in our community. What we continue to see are people losing their jobs in other communities that come back home, file their unemployment claims here, and as a result, we share the burden of showing a higher unemployment rate, even though these jobs are somewhere else. And so we're working on trying to address that with a number of commercial and retail projects, a couple of industrial projects that we're going to be speaking to you as we're moving forward on those, and we hope to show you. But just to give you an idea, last year, unemployment rate, this year was about, or in and around this time, was about 12 percent. In January, when they made that change, it went up to about 15.8 percent. In February, it dropped down to 15.5. In March, it dropped down to 14.9, and we expect that when we get the report for April, which we get at the middle of this month, it's going to be a little bit lower as well. This is all seasonal, we see these changes, everyone sees them, but we've confirmed that the changes and these increases have happened throughout the valley, including in the larger urban areas. One of the other things we wanted to point out to you is that the majority of these jobs are still being seen at the healthcare industry. We see that industry growing significantly, and brings us to our other report. We had not given you a report on the construction at the college. A lot of you joined us for the groundbreaking. The expectation is that these buildings will be completed by December of this year, and by the spring of next year, we'll have a full-fledged nursing program running from our Starr County campus. So we're excited about that, because we have a lot of people that are looking at the healthcare industry for their jobs, and now we'll be able to have them, have those classes here. We played a significant role in making those expansions happen. The construction will double the size of the campus, will add about 100,000 square feet of facilities, but more importantly, we're going to have some really, really significant programs that are going to continue to change the way that people look at their education and the way that we bring training to people that we're trying to bring to our community. Finally, our hope is that as we're moving forward, there's some items on the agenda today that we'll go over with you, that will, we hope will help in our recruitment and our development process. We'll go over those with you all later on today, and we're available for any questions that you might have, and you'd like for us to answer.
Okay, but what is it that you were talking about? Yeah, but no, we go, we need to discuss it. Ah, okay. That's executive session.
Yes, okay, all right, thank you, gentlemen.
All righty.
¿Quién sigue?
Tu primo.
No, me, no. Tu cousin brother. Ah, ma, leche, Jaime.
Treasury's Office, I think it's to your table, eh? Not the upper genoy. Okay. Starr County Sheriff's Department.
I left a copy of the revenues for the month of 2017, April 2017, on your desk, showing total revenues for April, $128,847.
It went in increase compared to last month, or not?
It's a decrease of 148 from last month.
How much?
148,303. For...
It was 148 last month?
Correct.
Now, 20,000 less.
Yeah, we're 20,000 less. We had federal inmates 96 in April, and we're down to 91 in May. We also had a decrease of county inmates from 136 to 126. We went down 10 as well.
Okay.
You in charge of the children?
That is correct.
You should look.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Letter G, Mr. Gonzalez, Dennis?
Table, Judge.
Table?
Sir.
International Bridge, Mr. Peña?
Hold on here. Total revenue from traffic for April, $214,239.50. We show an increase of $8,181.50 for the month of April 2017 compared to the month of April 2016. We show a decrease of $13,814.50 on collections for the month of April 2017 compared to the month of March 2017. Rent receipts were $500, currency exchange excess 240.16 cents, Border Patrol deported aliens zero, total loather collections 740.16 cents, total traffic collection 214,239.50 for a grand total collection for the month of April, 214,979.66 cents. Y de ahí no hay que hacerle antaño.
Yeah, para que retorsione.
No, no, no pueden fallar. Las vacas también. Cuando hay otros Comisionados, pues le meten el reservador, tú sabes.
Commissioner, how is it going based on the revenue that the judge projected, the bridge?
Pues no sé, me he tuvo de acá.
Pero me imagino...
He projected about... We need to bring him in, so he can tell us.
Sí, pero, but it's been pretty steady, no?
Yeah, very steady.
It's been...
And even though we had some problems in, pues no, era Reynosa, ¿no?, que tuvo el problemón.
Pero aquí está bien.
But there's still a lot of people crossing into Mexico, a lot of them.
God bless them.
La roja, ¿eh? Ahí te da una de la que dice, "God bless you."
Very, okay. Letter I, Federal State Program.
It's going to be table for ex-Missioners.
Okay, okay.
Ya, pero, la casa de Barbara.
Almost, we're hoping today.
Today.
We're hoping she'll be invited by today.
A lo que le vi, ahí, en la Zanahía.
I'm hoping by today.
I don't even know where it's at.
Huh?
I don't even know where it's at, do you?
Yeah, it's on, it's on Roma Street, and hopefully by today, he's going to be working on it the weekend, so we'll be doing a final, hopefully by the...
It's at Robinson subdivision.
No, no, the boy of the rosita.
¿Qué tiene?
The mask of the stairs and the rosita.
Ah, no sé. ¿No ves?
Yeah, Connie went by this morning, and we're going to do a inspection this afternoon for both of them.
Está chiquita, pero ahí va. Pero eso hay mucho. La endereza, sí. No, esta la mía está acabada. Y ya me la acaba, y esta también. La quilo vita, no me la voy a... Jesus Christ.
Before, is, here's Sam with the auditor's office, is he going to be coming in? The auditor can be coming in, or, what did Becky say?
No, Becky said that he would be coming in, because she wanted him in executive session, so that's why she called her.
Pero who's coming in? Tamano, we'll talk to him when we get in there, okay, Tamano, okay. I wanted the real McCoy, the auditor, because...
No, he said, he went by our office on Friday, and will just be available after lunch.
Because, you know, I'm hoping that we can get together with that man and see what he expects from us, and what we need to do to make it easier not to have this problem we had before, and hopefully, he get those people that he's got working for him out of that high horse, they were riding on to bring him down to, not on flat ground, you know, because he's got people that think they're the auditors, and I think he needs to understand that. And I'm going to the person that will tell, let him know.
Abajo el caballo.
No, que abaje el caballo, y se van a pie.
Se sube al blanco.
Yes, sir.
Al valle.
Yes, sir.
Se quiere ir.
And with all your respect, Sam, I'm not talking about you, but there's a mistake that they're riding a high horse, they need to get off and, you know, and start walking. Okay, I have a motion to table letter A, B, E, and G.
I do so move.
If they move by Commissioner Peña, second by Commissioner Science, any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or opposed, same sign, motion carried, okay? So, item number six, discuss and take, to approve new vendors for Starr County Auditor's Office. I think that can...
Compañero, Commissioner, sorry, it'll be table until further notice for that new vendor.
Okay, move to table.
Single, will you?
If they move by Commissioner Peña, second by Commissioner Aldis, any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or opposed, same sign, motion carried. Item number eight, discuss and take action to approve countywide burn ban by the judge.
What is that? That's an ongoing thing.
Okay, but we, I think we have to renew every...
Okay.
Move to pass.
Who, who gets to say, what can be burned and what cannot be burned?
When, or what?
What, or where? Quien es que dice, what can you burn, where can you burn, or, there's certain things you can burn. I have a bunch of burns and stuff.
Right, yeah.
But I think people are basically interpreting that they cannot never burn, and then people just...
I think they burn...
Prozaravia, this one will be...
And, yeah, thank you, Mr. Zaravia, they want the church.
This one, this one is for this. This is what we should be explaining.
Prescribed burns are allowed, and a fire department should always be on standby. If any agriculture person has the need to have a prescribed burn, which is an agricultural burn, all they have to do is contact the fire department, and that is what prescribed burn is.
Because you know this.
Yes.
We were in the province, but.
All they have to do is call their.
The public should know this. You know, what Zaravia should be doing is.
That's what I, and I agree with Commissioner Alvarez, because, you know, there's people that, you know, cut a bunch of bread, you know, trees and all that stuff, and they put them in the back of their property, and they want to burn it.
It's perfectly legal, as long, like I said, as the fire department knows.
Why did they burn them for?
Because a lot of people burn when they're not supposed to, Commissioner, like when there's a lot of wind, and it's a hazard to the neighbors, or to, you know, any other properties. And that's why, when this burn ban goes into effect, the fire departments, once they're notified, they're on standby so that this won't happen.
It looks like we're doing it just to look, do the paperwork, that we're doing something, but is it really necessary? Or is the public know, does the public know what they can do and what they cannot do? I don't think they know.
Well, it's just for everyone's safety, Commissioner.
Well, like I said, I mean, and I, to a certain point, you could just be burning trash, especially trash. People get to him, and, you know, and when the grass is very dry, you know, they don't take the precaution of cleaning up around, you know, to make sure that, but Commissioner Alvarez has a certain point, because.
If people would know that they can follow a protocol, it would make it easier for all of us. But people don't know that, that they can follow a protocol that they can burn, because they see the sign, burn ban, and reading the newspaper, oh, yeah, I'm hoping by, I'm hoping by this, I don't think that's all, that whole group.
Yeah, I know, and there's people that, the biggest problem is people's trying to burn household trash. That's a problem.
Can I go ahead and add this, Commissioner? Normally, we do put it on Facebook, and we send it to the newspaper, and that's a list that you have there.
But Facebook is Facebook.
Excuse me? We send it to the newspapers also.
Right.
You have the list in front of you of the burn man, and Derek has everything that you can.
I don't have it, but I'll tell you something, you know, there are certain people that are hooked on that Facebook stuff, you know? I don't even know, hardly know how to turn on the computer, and they're like, they're looking on the Facebook, or, you know? And there's other people that don't have, you know, we need to be aware that there's people out there that, let me tell you, I never read a newspaper. I never read a newspaper. What I see on the news, what I see, watch on TV, I never open up a newspaper to read it. And there's a bunch of people the same way. People, and there's a lot of people don't even know how to read. So we need to make sure, make the people aware, in different, we need to forget about this new technology, too, that the Facebook, y'ke el taxi, y'ke se.
When I was under the commission, it happened to me. I burned in the Sheriff Department, the Fire Department, the Commissioner's up there, and go blah, 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 blah. Some wasn't supposed to know, some wasn't supposed to know. So, I don't know.
It's a precaution for the county, that's all. And at any time, the Commissioners can always do away with it.
Thank you.
Well, we're gonna approve the burn man or not?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I do so move, we approve that.
Second by Commissioner Sainz, all those in favor, 65, I say an aye. Or a post same sign, motion carries. Okay, now. Item number nine, discussing take action to approve reimbursement of application fees and certificate fees in the amount of $275 to KFC Planning Department.
Kentucky for chicken? Kentucky for chicken?
Your Honor, your honor and Commissioners, this reimbursement request was brought forth to the planning department, because the city is now taking over the permits and fees for all, you know, within city limits. And when they came to apply for their renewal, it was before, it was right before September, because the city started September 2016 doing their own. So therefore, Rio Grande informed us that they would be doing the inspection, so we need to give KFC their 275 back, and they're gonna be doing their inspection with the city.
I'm hoping we approve the river.
Okay, so now, our inspectors don't have anything to do within the.
Within the city.
Yes, sir.
Within the city.
Just the room. Thank you.
It may move by Commissioner Alvarez, second by Commissioner Sainz. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, 65, I say an aye. Or a post same sign, motion carries. Okay? Let me see. Item 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, and 21, our budget amendment.
Commissioner, table through the primaries, the budget amendments.
Okay. I'm hoping we table.
Second.
Hold on, hold on, I think I got a concern, it's a budget amendment, and I think that in case, I think we should approve it, in case they're not in order, it has to be rejected by the auditor.
That's the reason, because the new auditor project, I assume to show them a lot of amendments.
You already showed them, and he said to tailor?
Well, I'm talking to him, yeah, because he's not throwing in yet, so that's why I'm talking to him, I think I guess it's special, not a special meeting.
I can wait to the next.
But can't we pass them? Subject to review. Or subject to a condition, that if there's anything wrong, he can reject them?
Okay.
Victor?
Victor, please.
What do you think there?
Commissioners, normally when we have budget amendments, and what the Commissioners Court has always traditionally done, is if it's a zero change to any budget, the court passes it. Whenever there's a deficit, that's what the court generally means, in order. If that's the case, y'all can make a motion that says that as long as there is no change to the bottom line of the budget, that you can approve it. The problem with approving subject to the auditor's approval, you're gonna get into a lot of semantics. If the auditor comes in, doesn't like certain kinds of budget amendments, they can kick it out. I would request that the court make a motion to approve the budget amendments if they do not change the bottom line of the budget.
Correcto.
If there is a zero change in the budget.
There's not gonna be any change in the budget?
Correct.
If there's any change, you can reject them.
Correct.
If you don't have the money, you don't have to change it. Okay?
If I pay?
As long as.
Do we have to resent, because we're in a minute.
Can you reword the, can you reword the, can you reword?
Basically, at this point, Commissioners, because there was a motion and a second made, if someone could rescind the motion.
I want to rescind the motion, that's.
Okay, I'll second it. Yeah. I'll do it again.
Motion to.
To approve subject to a zero change in their budget.
Yes, that's the motion.
Okay. But Commissioner Sainz, second by Commissioner Alvarez, any discussion? If not, all those in favor, 65, I say an aye.
Aye.
Or a post same sign, motion carries. Item number 22, discussing take action to accept donation.
What to accept donation?
In the amount of $595 from Maria de Rosario Lozano, to Stark County Nutrition, Pressing Four. Do I have a motion?
Yeah.
It may move, and second, it may move by Commissioner Sainz, second by Commissioner Alvarez. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, 65, I say an aye. Or a post same sign, motion carries. Item number 23, discussing take action to accept donation for the amount of $500 from EcoSight to Stark County Pressing Four. Is it the contrary of this?
The one that cuts the hair.
Okay, it may move, it may move by Commissioner Sainz, second by Commissioner Alvarez.
Que madre.
All those in favor, 65, I say an aye. Or a post same sign. No, este es Eco, pero Eco no es el contrario de este.
Está donando.
Está donando para que.
Para que compre queso.
We could have an affirmative aye from somebody on that motion.
Para que compre queso, para la raza.
Yeah, yeah, I said, all in favor, 65, I say an aye. All opposed, same.
La barrita de queso.
Okay. Now, we're gonna have to skip all the way to item 23, we're gonna go into executive session. Discuss section 551017, and section 551087. We're gonna go into executive session, discuss.
What do we have to say?
The items, and we'll come back, take it. It's 15 till 12, and we're back in open session. Mr. Canales?
Yes, Commissioners, at this time, the Office of the County Attorney would respectfully request that the Commissioners Court approve items 25, 26, and 27 as presented to the court.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll move to accept 25, 26, and discuss.
Second, it may move by Commissioner Sainz, second by Commissioner Alvarez.
24 is second.
All in favor, 65, I say an aye.
Aye.
Or a post same sign, motion carries.
Additionally, Commissioner, we would ask that the court approve item 24 as discussed in executive session, and ask the court to adopt a motion of that nature.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll move it.
Second, move by Commissioner Alvarez, second by Commissioner Peña. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, 65, I say an aye.
Aye.
Or a post same sign, motion carries. And the other is the order of salaries.
The order of salaries?
Or that includes the executive session, which we're gonna.
No, it's a.
Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
No, but I would adjourn. They made a motion.
I'm hoping we approve the order.
Okay.
Two seconds.
I did.
Okay. It may move by Commissioner Alvarez, second by Commissioner Sainz. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, 65, I say an aye. Or a post same sign, motion carries. Okay, now, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
It may move by Commissioner Peña, second by Commissioner Sainz. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, 65, I say an aye. Or a post same sign, motion carries.